Evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday night, August 8th Board of Selectmen meeting. I'll read the agenda. 7:00 PM Citizens Input. 7:05 Veterans Director Michael Johns Discuss Purple Heart Day. 7:15 Mark Ferenic Historical Commission Chair Discuss Vote on Jonathan Glover Becoming an Associate Member of the Historical Commission with the Term Expiring of 5/118. 7:25 PM Public Hearing NPS LLC Discussion of the Kenny Chesney Concert on August 25th and 26th. 7:35 Selectmen's Update. 7:45 Town Manager's Update. 7:55 Assistant Town Manager's Update. And then we have several action items. Can I have Mike lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Clerk) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Mike. 7 o'clock. Anybody here for Citizens Input?
Now's the time if you want to say something.
Just state your name and address on the record.
Paulo Sullivan, 19 Alden Street. I'm here to speak concerning the Tuxey Road Drive with the Knights of Columbus that we've been allowed to do for as long as I can remember. And it's coming up in October.
Do we have the exact date?
Columbus Day weekend.
Yeah, be Columbus Day weekend on October. And we usually solicit donations around the common. There's been some, somebody has asked the purpose of the money. At the same time, I'm the State Deputy of the Knights of Columbus, which makes me the highest ranking officer in the state. All the money throughout the state goes into our charity fund. Every last nickel from it, no deductions for expenses. The money is used to pay for wheelchair ramps and van conversions and other things that are needed by disabled and mentally disabled children and mentally disabled adults of all ages. So it's an excellent cause. Every year, we're able to obtain anywhere from $3,500 to $5,000 from the citizens of Foxborough and those surrounding communities that pass through. So any questions that you might have on that, I'd be pleased to entertain.
Okay. So for the board's edification, this is actually an action item later on this evening. So this is offered as an explanation of that one action item. So what is the option if they want to take the item up now or if they want to hold off until later on to take action on it?
What's the favor of the board?
Since a gentleman here, I might as well do it here rather than these questions later.
Why don't we do that action item now?
Um...
Number two.
Yep. Move to approve the Knights of Columbus, Foxborough Council 6063, to collect donations at road entrances of the common on 10/7/17.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
All right, so we're one minute ahead of schedule for the record. Mike, want to come up?
Keep good notes for Dave, by the way.
Hello?
You can have a seat if you want.
Okay.
Yesterday was Purple Heart Day. Every August 7th is. It's a national recognition day. And we have, for the last several years, recognized that at the Board of Selectmen meeting closest to August 7th. This was initiated by former selectman Mark Sullivan and then taken up for action by selectwoman Jenny Coppola, who's really just done a fantastic job of giving us traction and given us the opportunity to recognize a lot of folks in this community who have given above and beyond. So, this is the medal. And I just want to read some comments. None are unscathed in combat. It's a matter of how one handles the aftermath, which is largely dependent on how one is accepted, treated, served, and recognized by comrades, a grateful nation, an appreciative community, and loving family members and friends. Each year during the first week of August, on or about the 7th, we take time to recognize the service and sacrifice given by our service members wounded in combat. We appreciate all who have answered our nation's call. And today, we especially recognize our mortally and critically wounded heroes and their families whose price most of us will never fully comprehend or appreciate. Today and every day, we thank you and wish you Godspeed. In years past, the town of Foxborough and its leadership have recognized 73 of our Purple Heart recipients. And my remarks tonight were to be general and sincere. After recent telephone conversation with Mr. Richard Gorman, however, who was inquiring about the process of getting a replacement Purple Heart Medal for his deceased father, we realized it was time to recognize a 74th recipient. I asked my coworker and associate, Matthew McKenzie, who couldn't be here tonight because he's otherwise engaged in Town Hall, to write up a little bit of the story about Mr. Gorman and his unit. Matthew McKenzie is a history major who's almost completed his master's degree in military history, so I thought it much more fitting for him than I, an engineer, to try to put together the prose. Mr. Gorman was attached to Company C 139th Airborne Engineer Battalion of the 17th Airborne Division during World War II. During the Second World War, the 17th Airborne Division took part in the last major Allied engagements in the European Theater of Operations. In late September of 1944, the 17th Airborne was utilized as a strategic element in Operation Market Garden, an Allied offensive with the goal of maneuvering past access defenses. The success of the operation would allow the capture of vital industrial centers that supplied enemy armies and end the war by holiday season. Allied airborne units parachuted behind enemy lines to capture a series of bridges that would allow ground elements direct access into the heart of Germany. Despite the hard work of the Allied individuals involved in the operation, the plan ultimately failed, and the Allies were forced to retreat and reorganize. In late December 1944, in response to Operation Market Garden and the presumption of weakness in Allied forces, the German army crashed through the Ardennes region of Belgium and France in an attempt to break the Allied supply chains, taking both British and American forces by surprise. The Allies, scrambling to hold their position from collapsing, utilized airborne units to bolster their ground forces to counter the offensive. The 17th Airborne was attached to General Patton's 3rd Army and took part in liberating Bastogne, which eventually broke the German line and halted their advance. During the combat operations in and around Bastogne, the 17th Army suffered heavy casualties but fought bravely and assaulted enemy positions with ferocity. Following the siege, the 139th Airborne Engineers were responsible for explosive ordinance disposal of enemy mines and improvised explosive devices and the construction of bridges to allow ground forces to advance. The siege of Bastogne and other engagement that took place between December of 1944 and January of 1945 would later be known collectively as the Battle of the Bulge. This hard-won battle by the Allies crushed the last of the German offensive forces, and this decimation of strategic reserves allowed the Allies to push into the German heartland. The 17th Airborne took part in these engagements as part of Allied Operation Varsity, which successfully provided access for Allied armies to cross the last major natural obstacle into the German interior, the Rhine River. In the course of a few short months, individuals within the 17th Airborne, such as Mr. Gorman, fought bravely and with distinction. Their tenacity and sacrifices helped to not only win the Second World War but to liberate the peoples of Europe. And I do have a certificate that we'll be presenting to Mr. Gorman's son, Richard. The chairman of our board is not able to be here because he's on vacation, and Mr. Gorman is also not able to be here. But we thought it wise to recognize him and to present this certificate in front of the community on this Purple Heart Week. The certificate reads, Francis C. Gorman, World War II, Purple Heart recipient. The town of Foxborough takes great pleasure in honoring your service and sacrifice above and beyond the call of duty. Your selfless service is the very heart and soul that our great nation was built upon, and your example stands as a testament to the price of freedom, independence, and democracy we enjoy today. We, the protected and privileged, thank you for your loyal, dedicated service and sacrifices on behalf of the United States of America, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the town of Foxborough. Presented on behalf of a grateful community this 8th day of August 2017. Signed by myself and David Feldman, Chairman, Board of Selectmen. This obviously will be presented to his son. Mr. Gorman the Senior is deceased, and I have with it a miniature Purple Heart Medal, which I hope will satisfy that replacement until we get the new one that comes in from the Department of Defense. Thank you all for your time, for your attention to veterans, and for allowing me to present and educate the community a little bit more on the importance of this Purple Heart Medal.
Great. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Any trouble getting the replacement medal from the Department of Defense?
It should not be trouble.
Okay.
But I know you may have a couple of people that could come to my aid if we should need that.
If you run into anything, we have some high-level connections, so...
There shouldn't be a problem. The paperwork is all there. His injuries, his war record is all very clear, so there shouldn't be any problem. But I know who to come to if I should run up against a stolen wall.
Anybody have any other questions on that?
Very well done.
Yeah, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
While we have you in the chair, any updates on the memorial? Are you ready to share?
Money continues to come in, and you'll see the last three or four action items are individual donations from both businesses and residents. The plans are moving forward. The engineering drawings are just about done, and we're still on track to cut the ribbon on the memorial, on the common, on the morning of Veterans Day, November 11th. We have two speakers that are going to be coming to the community. One is going to speak at the memorial. It'll be very brief, because we don't know what the weather will hold on November 11th. And then we'll move to the high school indoors as usual. And Mr. Joshua Green, who's a retired Army Lieutenant Colonel, will be flying in from, I believe it's Ohio, to visit his hometown and to share his keynote remarks with us.
Awesome.
So we look forward to that.
Very good.
One other thing of note is, right around the corner is POW MIA Day. We're putting flyers around the community. POW MIA Remembrance Day or Recognition Day is the 3rd Friday in September. We do a 24-hour vigil, and then our ceremony is the next day on Saturday.
Glad to see that is still going.
Yes. Great event, always well attended, and, you know, very meaningful.
Please extend, Matt, our collective. Thanks for doing that history piece. That was very well done.
I wish he could have been here, but his boss wouldn't let him out of the office.
Don't know that guy.
Thanks.
Thanks again for all the support and leadership from this community to the veterans and service members who give so much of themselves. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, next up, 7:15, Mark Ferenic, Historical Commission Chair. You guys want to come up? Name and address for the record.
Mark Ferenic, 29 Baker Street. I am the chairman of the Foxborough Historical Commission, and we would like to have Jonathan Glover join our board as an associate member. He's originally from Sharon, but at some point he saw the light and moved to Foxborough.
Hold that again, should have...
There have been a few of us that have seen that light.
Lives with his wife Brenda and twins Matthew and Eden at 33 Baker Street in the Historical District. They are working on restoring their house, and in 2015, the commission gave them the Restoration Award. He has a lot of good ideas, bring a lot of enthusiasm to the commission, and he's a young guy that can climb the ladders for us. That's all I've got.
Jonathan, you have anything to add, or...
No, I was just really honored when Mark asked me if I was interested and would consider it. And, you know, I found it an honor, and I think it would be a great way to be involved in town. I've been here about five years, and I am interested in history and thought it would be a good way to get involved in what's going on.
Seeing a next generation of leaders in the community in these different committees, it's great to see.
Yeah. Anybody on the board have anything?
No, I think it's great.
I think I just want to, you know, say this is awesome. I'm glad with what Bill says, stepping up. Just want to pass on again our thanks to Donald Wright and everything he did for the commission, so... Motion?
Move to approve Jonathan Glover as an associate member to the Historic Commission.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
How old are your twins?
Best of luck.
Six years old, going in first grade at Agon.
There you go. Mine turned 26 on Sunday.
Oh, okay.
It's a little bit of a generational difference there.
Take care.
Thank you.
All right, we've got some time to kill. Want to hit some action items?
Move to approve the Wampanoag Road Runners 2030 Annual Old Fashioned 10 Mile and 5K Road Races on 2/18/18 with a snow date of 3/11/18 from 9:30 AM to 1:30 PM.
Snow date.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. We did the Knights of Columbus. Move to approve an early liquor license extension request for Splitsville for 11:00 AM for New England Patriots Sunday Home Games of 9:24, 10:1, 10:29, 11:26, 12:24, and 12:31.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Move to approve an early liquor license extension for Better Food Foxborough LLC, doing business as Tavelino's Patriot Place, requesting an 11:00 AM start for the New England Patriot Sunday Home Games of 9:24, 10:1, 10:29, 11:26, 12:24, and 12:31.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to approve 10 one-day all alcohol liquor licenses for the New England Patriots Charitable Foundation for Patriot Home Games on the following days. 8/10/17, 8/31/17, 9/7/17, 9/24/17, 10/1/17, 10/22/17, 10/29/17, 11/26/17, 12/24/17, and 12/31/17.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to approve the gift donation in the amount of $70 to recreation left over from an Eagle Scout project from the Boy Scouts of America.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $35 to the Council on Aging for the Lock Box Program from Anonymous.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $150 to the Council on Aging to pay for half of History with Paolo lectures in July from the Friends of Foxborough seniors.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $160 to the Council on Aging for services from the various participants in Changing Aging Program at Patriot Place.
Seconded. Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $31.99 to the Historical Commission to purchase books from Susan Cook.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $20 to Veteran Services to the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Laurie Waterman.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $25 to Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Lawrence and Carol Dugai.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $100 to Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from the RE/MAX Real Estate Center.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $100 to Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Sheila Roach and Nancy Otrondo.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $250 to Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from the Foxborough J.C.'s.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And move to approve the 10/4/2016 Board of Selectmen Minutes.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Motion to approve?
Aye.
All right.
It's about time.
All right, it's not a minute early?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. You want to read the public hearing?
The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 140, Section 181 and Section 183A, and Chapter 136, Section 4, Code of the Town of Foxborough, Chapter 229, and also the stadium rules and regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, August 8th, 2017, beginning at 7:25 PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center, 120 South Street, to review the application submitted by NPS LLC for the Kenny Chesney 2017 tour. This event is proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for this event is on file at the Office of Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Evening.
Hi, Jess Yennis with Gillette Stadium.
George Bell, Stadium Advisory Committee.
Here before you this evening to talk through the points of Kenny Chesney Friday, August 25th and Saturday, August 26th, the stadium. This year, last year's show and this year's show are pretty similar. The biggest difference between, you know, what we're asking for tonight versus last year is that this year, Kenny Chesney actually did not tour. So the two Gillette Stadium dates are his only stadium dates of the entire summer. He essentially took the summer off. He did a couple of smaller dates around the country, but his only North American stadium dates are ours, which speaks volumes to the relationship that we've formed with him and his management team, how he sincerely feels about the region, the market. It really is very much a homecoming for him. So, you know, we're extremely proud of being the only stadium to be able to host him this summer, and we hope that that trickles down to the rest of the community as well, and people feel a sense of pride and ownership in having this event. So with that being said, gates open at 4:00, and the ticketed event start time is 5:00. Event end time is 11:15, and as of right now, we don't foresee it going beyond curfew, and if it does, we'll certainly notify the board in writing, come before you if necessary, handle it as we have in the past. We expect two sellouts, so 50,000 people for each night. The lineup is exactly the same both nights, so Midland, Old Dominion, and Thomas Rett open up for Chesney. We've had Old Dominion, the name probably sounds familiar because this is now the third time that they have opened up for Chesney. It's a great opening act in that they're probably, respectfully, have outgrown the role, and they do drive people into the building earlier. So it's nice to have them so early in the evening because it helps people move from, you know, the parking lot into the venue. We're going to continue all of our standard stadium practices with respect to the clear bag policy, the mags. All of our security searches will be in place that we've had for all of our other shows. This show has a mix, so it's kind of a hybrid of the two full stadium shows where we've had complete GA floors and then one where we've had a complete reserved floor. There's a pit for this show that's got about 4,200 people total divided, one on either side of the stage, and the balance of the floor is all fixed seats. So it's actually the same exact staging and the same exact CAD drawing that we used last year for reference. So like I said, it's a little bit of a hybrid with about a third of the floor being a GA space and the rest of it all being fixed seats. We do anticipate having, we request North Street being open. We will continue to operate our taxi stand at the bottom of Lot 5 and then also our Uber lot in Lot 22. We think this show will see even more of an uptick in the Uber lot usage. It's been a huge hit so far this summer with our concert attendees, so we'll continue to encourage it. And we do anticipate it being a busy evening for Uber drivers in the area. We have six new mist tents. So one of the things, as this event has sort of evolved over the last 13 times that we've had Chesney at the stadium, from a public safety standpoint, there are two big changes now that we're implementing, or we have over the years. We build out a separate substation for police so that they've got extra space for booking. It allows them, they're not confined to the existing stadium space. They have overflow, so it allows them to move freely. And both chief and lieutenant are both up on, have been briefed on that and agree that it's the right thing to do for their show again, so we'll certainly have that up and running for them. We also have invested, part of the new stadium structures have been helpful. The cross pavilion is used as a cooling area for, the fire chief will come in and they'll allow that space for people to get out of the heat, to get out of the sunshine for a little bit as needed. And then also this year, we've invested in six new misting stations. So they're not tents, they're almost just like giant fans, but we've been piloting them out at training camp so far this summer, and they've been a big hit. They do help reduce the temperature, they give people a little bit of a break without being messy or creating slippery walkways. So we'll definitely have those in use and deployed as the chief sees fit.
Will those be deployed inside the stadium or in the parking lots?
You know, it'll be up to Chief Hatfield, really wherever he thinks that they need to be.
Those are in the plaza.
Okay.
At the rate this summer is going, we might be in hoodies, so you just kind of wait and see.
And raincoats.
Yeah, you don't know. Hopefully, we've got a nice sunny...
It's a good addition for up there. That's good.
And did I miss anything, George?
No. Just wanted to comment a couple of things in terms of past concerts and how they've, I want to say, morphed and, you know, become better based on the things that we've learned from them. Well, Al Dodley is going to control the sound, which is great, you know, and he's always in, from a noise perspective. We have talked with the police department there at our meeting in relation to controlling a couple of the past problem areas, be it Route 115 and 140, that intersection. I think it's a big help that significant band, starting bands, will, you know, watching it from last year's perspective. And again, over in Lot P-10 and P-11, they really, the state police really, I want to say, coordinate well, moving the people across, and, you know, having those bands start, you know, makes it easier.
I made a noticeable difference last year.
Right.
Noticeable.
Right. We've worked with the stadium, public health people in relation to more portageons in that back lot. in that back lot, which are kind enough to do. One thing I found was really impressive also is the way that public safety people, both the police and fire, have worked together and simulated responses based on the, I want to say, the most recent world events. So, you know, they were at our meeting and really gave us, you know, great comfort working with the stadium. They're looking to set up a command center that's offsite, literally, for all major events, I want to say, or this one being one of them, but the NFL games, so that they literally would not have a, in addition to what they have at the stadium, they have another one offsite. The right turn on North Street is working really well. The state police pushing people. I know our senior member of the committee, Frank Baresi, is right down there on North Street making sure traffic flows, and if it doesn't, letting us know. But I want to say that they, it really makes a big difference when there isn't the blockage of people that think they can get onto Route 1 and head down. So, we, as a, as a group, voted unanimously to recommend for your approval, and we'll be attending both nights, and look forward to another successful day.
Anybody on the board have any questions? Jenny, well presented.
It's been a good season overall, too. I mean, I think the shows have been really, really well run. There's been very few issues from a public safety perspective. So, that's, that's kudos to, to your organization as well as the, and the work the committees do.
I think Coldplay had two protective custards.
Two protective custards. That's amazing, when you think about it.
Protective custards, that man, you know, Russ.
Yep. He did a really great summer.
It's been good.
Okay, seeing as a public hearing, anybody in the public have anything to say? Make a motion to close the...
Move to close the public hearing.
Seconded. In favor?
Aye.
All right.
Move to approve the application from NPS LLC for the Kenny Chesney concert on both August 25th and August 26th, 26th, uh, 2017.
Seconded. Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
Round to 2017.
All right, ahead of schedule for the record. Selectmen's update, just got a couple of things. Just want to thank the J.C.'s, Chief Hatfield, Police Department, everybody for National Night Out last week. Didn't rain, and I'm glad they didn't schedule it on the night we had a meeting, so it was good.
Chief, stick off one minute.
And then, just one update. I saw Sunday, our old volunteer Frank that used to do the filming here, I saw him grocery shopping. He looks great. He said to say hi to everybody, and he's looking to try to make a comeback, so we'll see.
Great.
That's all I had. Does anybody else on the board have anything? Okay. Town managers update?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Pro Tem, I guess, is that how that works? So, first of all, I want to start off by announcing that the, we have some great news to report, that the Town of Foxborough has been the recipient of a, of a significant grant from the federal government, which is something that is rare, doesn't, something that happens very often in this community in particular. We don't get a lot of federal grants, but this one is, is what is known as a Fire Safer Grant. I've given the board a summary of, of the pieces to that, but we're going to make a formal presentation, this on the 22nd, to the board, because we want to wait for a full board to be present for that discussion. We have to, as a town, formally accept the grant, so I, you know, it's really up to the board to make that decision. So, we'll, we'll have a presentation, and then, and certainly that's why I gave you a summary tonight. If there's any questions during the next few weeks, you want to call me or speak to the chief directly about it. I think that's really important that you're well versed in this issue, because it's, it's very significant for the town. What is essentially, just a summary of the grant is that it's a federal grant that allows the town to hire four new firefighters that will allow us the ability to finally get to the point rank, to the, the staffing level of eight per shift. That staffing level has been recommended since 2006 for the community, but we've never really quite reached that funding requirement. This is an opportunity now where the grant will actually help us reach that goal over period three years, where we will receive funding from the federal government. It'll be phased in over, over that period of time, and the town will eventually be responsible for, for funding the full amount. During the period of time that we, we have the funding in place, the employees will have to remain in the employ of the town. At the end of the grant period, if the town decides that they do not want to go forward, there are a couple of things that you can do at that point. There's always opportunities where, where staff leave for retirements, things of that nature, you can actually reduce the staff, staffing complement if we choose we're not in a position to afford that, or if we can, we can continue to fund the positions and leave them at, at that full level. We're hoping that we reach that level, because that was a recommended staffing complement that we've been trying to strive for for many, many years. So, I want to particularly thank the, the Fire Department staff, Deputy Chief Kelleher and Lieutenant Patini, who is, who actually were instrumental in writing this grant. It's, there's not many, very many communities in Massachusetts that received this.
Only that I know of right now, five.
Right, in the entire Commonwealth. So, that's pretty significant, pretty significant. So, Chief, do you want to add anything?
I can't, it's...
You may just come to the, to the mic, please.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Chief Roger Hatfield, 10 Fisher Street. No, really, in honesty, this is something that we really never thought we'd get this first year. Most communities that go after the Safer Grant, it takes them two or three years to kind of build their case, and I can't say enough of the department, Deputy Chief Kelleher and Lieutenant Patini. The narrative is what sold the federal government on this. The key thing the community should be aware of is that this close to $750,000 grant does not have to be paid back. So, it's not like we're borrowing money. It's actually a grant to help support the town in its efforts to get their staffing levels where they need to be to protect the community. And I, I would be shameful if I didn't also thank Congressman Joe Kennedy's office. They wrote letters of support for our, for the Town of Foxborough and the Fire Department, and I feel that that also gave us some, some teeth in getting this grant, so. And we look forward to be able to give you guys the full presentation at your next meeting, but we gave you some fact sheets there. Please, if there's any questions at all, don't hesitate to give me a call, reach out to the Town Manager and, or Deputy Chief Kelleher. We'd love to share any information that might pop up with anybody.
So, I just want to take this opportunity to congratulate you and the department for fine work in this area. This is really quite significant for the town.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Bill, can I just ask?
Sure.
I don't want to look a gift horse in the mouth, and it's too early to discuss this, but I'm sure the presentation's going to be great in, in, you know, to get four new firefighters, but what I'm concerned about after the third and fourth year when it drops off, that 750 coming out of the budget somewhere to move forward, so some type of input from the Finance Committee or Randy, so it's not a surprise after three or four years when this is forgotten.
Absolutely.
We do a good job hiring, but we don't do a good job...
Of letting people go, yeah, understood. And so, so let me just tell you that Randy, Randy actually is planning to be away that weekend, but he said he was, he's going to write a letter of recommendation explaining his position on this. He does recommend that we do this, and he's going to give you the details as to how we get to that point in three years. So, he'll provide that backup for you for that, for that discussion. Okay? So, yeah, we fully anticipated that'd be the question that everybody would have, would want to hear, so we're already working on that piece.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief. So, the other, a couple of other items. We've got the, the Historical Commission, I should have actually mentioned it earlier when they were here, working on a picture project for the new Town Hall. They're actually, the challenge they have is that there are so many historical pictures that they want to actually use in the building, that they're having a hard time narrowing the field. So, but they are working on it.
Should have built a bigger Town Hall.
Yeah, well, I think you'll have a few arguments on that point, but, but it's great that they're, and they're really excited about doing the project, and they're really involved in it, which is great to see. And I've actually met with four of the members last night, or actually yesterday afternoon, and, and they just, they're really, really enthusiastic about it. So, we're, we're going to try and identify the pictures, they're going to, they're going to get them in a format that they're all really clear, and they're very, they're in a good, good framing capability, and then we're going to have them matted and then professionally framed, so that they'll all be consistent around the building. And then, there's also the, the issue of dealing with the paintings that we have, and how do we, how do we deal with those, too? So, there's, there's still some work that we've got to have done to try and get the, the building final, finally decorated and the interior pieces. So, the building itself is still working fabulously well. It's, I mean, we've had nothing but, I've had, we're doing a lot of tours, even from other towns, who are considering similar projects right now. So, they're all very, very much in, Sharon's been in, Gohasset was in yesterday, so they're, and there's others looking to come as well. So, we're very excited about, very proud of the ability to be able to show it off to folks. Then the old Town Hall, the rumors are that we, we may, it may start to come down as early as next week, the first of next week. And it, and just for anybody who's concerned, because this concern did come out, is that that project is, is fully documented, and it has to go through a DEP process, and where they take down buildings, especially old buildings, because there's, there's old materials in there. But those, the materials have all been mitigated and talked right out of the building so far already. There's a very detailed process by which this is done, and so, we're very confident that the work that's going to be done over the next week or two is going to be really well done and handled, you know, very properly. So, I just want people to be, because I, sometimes, we've already gotten a couple of questions about that, and we want to make sure people are aware of that. As far as, so, we're hoping to get that, that picture project up and running, probably within the next few weeks. We will still plan to do a formal ribbon cutting of the building probably in September, once the parking lot is completed. We did finish the, the access road up on Liberty Place just the other day, so that's another piece of the puzzle that's, that's being, being finished up right now. And so, we're getting close on, on those final pieces. The train issue has been obviously a very important issue to the town, and that's, we met last week in Boston, testified before the Financial Management Control Board, the MBTA. The meeting, I thought, went, went really well. There was, there was some opposition from Walpole, which we, we knew about. There was also some concerns expressed from, there's a group called the FAMON Coalition, who was concerned, actually, their, their concerns are not necessarily towards the town nor the use of the line, the line itself, it's just the fact that they have, they've been working on something for a long time to try to use that same line for their own uses and for their own purposes. And so, there's, they, they believe that there's a conflict. We don't necessarily think there is one, but we're trying to address that concern for them, so we can, so we can all live, live in peace together on that. But I had, I did work today on a letter from, with Paige Duncan, on a letter to Governor Baker, just expressing our support for it, going through all the details and the reasons for that, just to kind of express, you know, where we are with that, so we can further our position on that. We do hope to have a vote out of the FMCB next, next Monday. We're going back into Boston on, on Monday morning. Hopefully, they'll take action at that point to see where we can go forward on, on the, on the pilot program. So, just to be clear, for everybody who's listening, that this is a, this is, the vote would only be on the pilot program for 11-month trial period to evaluate the service to the town, and then following that 11-month period, there'll be a determination as to whether or not permanent service could be, could be entertained for the community. So, that's, that's where we are on the latest, that's the latest situation with that. I also provided for you tonight a letter from the City of Lowell relative to charter school funding. They, like, like us, are feeling the pinch of the funding that's been going into charter schools, and that the, the failure of the state to actually address the funding piece that's supposed to come back to cities and towns as, as a way to support the funding that gets drawn off the, the local school system and put into the charter schools. We see it's really a two-pronged point. This is just a, really addresses only one piece, and whether that is the actual reimbursement. We think the actual funding mechanism itself should be addressed, too, but, but at least I think I'd be willing to, to, I want to get the board's feeling whether or not we should write along a letter of support for the, their efforts in trying to at least get the funding piece done to support our efforts here locally. So, I don't know if I need, need a vote tonight, but if you want to give it some consideration, read through it, and then, and then we can act on it collectively at the 22nd meeting. That's, I'd like to...
Yeah, I'd like to read through.
And you'll have a full, you'll have a full board at, at that time as well.
So, this seems to be a home rule petition just for Lowell, so they get 100% back to them?
Right. So, we, what we, what they're asking us to do is for consideration to actually write on, write a letter of support, and perhaps even write our own, our own petition doing the same thing, which I would consider presenting to the board as a possibility, so we can get that consideration as well.
Yeah, I'd rather not vote on it now, let us all digest this.
Fair enough, yep. Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's important information, you should read it and understand it.
Now, this is addressed to the Town of Foxborough. Are they sending this to all 360 odd towns and cities?
Um, I think only the ones that really nearly impacted the most by charter school assessments. You can see that they actually came up with our specific assessment in there, and they noticed that we were one of the higher assessed communities in that regard. So, I don't know if, if they've done a lot with the committees that are being assessed, but obviously, I'm not sure they, they would have a need to be involved in that.
Do you think, next, the next meeting, when you bring this up, do you think Jay Barrows could be here?
Sure, I'll, I'll see if he can be here, that'd be great. Another important issue is that we, we did get the bid results in for the sewer project, and they came in under, significantly under budget, which is good, we have about $350,000, or you estimated 550 initially.
That's for the downtown?
For the downtown sewer project. So, by, by having that amount, that allows us to actually do more lateral work, which was, we helped with all the, all the various businesses and residents along that area. There is a meeting tonight at Town, at Town Hall, actually, the new Town Hall, to meet with the neighborhood neighbors up there to see if, if there's, you know, what, and again, to, to inform everybody what the process is and what, what the timetable is for, for that, that project to begin. So, we're looking to get started on that fairly soon, because it's a good time of year to be doing that kind of construction.
So, what did the bid commit at, 350?
350, and the original bid was, estimate was around 550.
Do we have to spend 550, or?
Well, the, the hope was is that if it came in at, at, at that number, we would be able to do more of the lateral type of work, to, you know, extending the laterals, leaving stubs at all the, the area along the streets, so we wouldn't have to go back and do that later on. So, it actually provides us more flexibility in doing the project, so.
I guess if the street's going to be ripped up, you might as well...
Now's the time to do it, if you're going to do it, so.
Yeah, because then, isn't there, if, if you rip up a street and then pave it, don't you have to wait?
You have to wait, well, if you do it, it's like five, I think it's five-year moratorium on that, so. We wouldn't want to be going back into it if we can help it.
I'm assuming there's an equation that's, that's playing into, so when all the homes and businesses tie into it, it's not, I mean, it's nice to have $200,000 to put towards it, with the people that are...
Which we won't spend all of that, but I just want to be clear about that.
The people that are on septic are not getting reimbursed or subsidized either, so...
Right.
You know, there's the main and arguably the laterals, but just because we have $200,000 doesn't mean everyone else that's not on sewer.
Right, understood. So, but, so, so here's the thing, is that the one thing that we can help residents that are interested in tying in is that we do have state revolving funds, SRF money, which is 0% financing, which helps people to, to pay for that, that construction. So, that's, that's funding that's available to virtually every town in Massachusetts, so we can, to help relieve people on septic issues and sewer issues. So, which will be helpful for folks, if we can try and get that, get them secure that.
So, the people that are invited to the meeting tonight, are they going to be giving, is it informational, or are they going to give costs of what it would, for them to tie into?
Yeah, it's a little bit of both. So, they'll have a better understanding of that.
So, so, can we get a little quick summary of how that meeting went?
Sure.
At our next meeting?
Yep. I'll know tomorrow morning, actually.
Yeah. So, so did, let us just go out to, to the abutters?
Just to the people that are going to be affected by it directly, yeah, yeah. So, they were notified, and we actually, we even, we, we haven't been holding meetings at the Town Hall because of the parking situation, but these are all people that literally live across the street, so. So, we allowed to, we was able, it was actually worked out pretty good for us to do that, so. Worked out pretty good. And then, a couple of other important issues. First of all, the announcement of Deb Spinelli retiring as school superintendent. Just want to say to Deb, and I, Deb and I haven't been able to connect, believe it or not, since, since she announced that, but we, we've talked just briefly, we texted back and forth a couple of times, but we're supposed to connect soon, but just want to say it's been a terrific relationship working with her. She's done a great job for this, for this community, and wish her nothing but the, but the best. She's done a great job for this community, and wish her nothing but the best. And to Amy, who's going to be the new superintendent, looking forward to working with her. We've worked with her a lot on various projects throughout the years that I've been here, and again, just another quality individual stepping into that role. So we're very excited about the continued great relationship that we've had with the school department and want to continue to move the town forward. But again, I just want to say thanks to Deb for all her hard work and hope that she truly enjoys her retirement and the fine work that she and the contribution she's made to the community. Another good piece of news is, want to say congratulations to Marcia Amando from our office who finished the PMS Challenge over the weekend.
She did all 160.
160 miles.
Yeah, she went from Wellesley to Bourne, then from Bourne to Provincetown the next day, so good for her. And the other 5,999 other riders that were involved in the race, or the ride, I should say, and for all the money they raised again for cancer, so cancer research. The goal this year was $48 million. They're hoping that they reached that or actually surpassed it. Collectively, over time, the PMS Challenge has raised about $600 million in total funds. It's a terrific event. I actually wrote it four times myself and raised a lot of money for that effort, and I'll tell you, it's one of the best things I've ever participated in, and it's, if anybody ever gets a chance to do it, I absolutely recommend it. It's just a great event.
Was some of the route through Foxborough?
Yeah.
It is, yeah. A portion of it does go through Foxborough.
Signs are still up.
Well, they keep the signs, well, the paper signs or the real signs?
They're on the, I was, North Street.
Yeah, there's a permanent sign that actually, they do have.
No, this was, I think this was on the ground.
Oh, was it?
There's a lot of paper, laminated plastic, paper signs.
Okay, all right, I need to get those, pick those things up. Usually pretty good about getting this stuff.
Yeah, they do have the permanent ones up, though they go by Vienna Line Street.
Yeah, you can tell the permanent route, so you can actually train on the route if you wanted to.
Yeah.
But it's actually a great route.
Yeah, but it did go through Foxborough, and it was pretty seamless.
Yeah.
There was a lot of people, and I don't think there was any incidents that I heard of.
No. No, they did have, I think a total of 17 medical treatments from when I was, what Marcia indicated this morning, but only one is actually still hospitalized out of the entire group, so. A lot of it's, you know, dehydration, things of that nature, things people get overcome, but, you know, hopefully it's nothing more than that. And then, Jim, I don't know if you're prepared to talk about this, but there is new ownership of the theater in the downtown, so hopefully the.
Yeah.
It's going to, actually, August 1st, I believe they took over.
Yeah, I see, I'm on the board of directors, is all together, there's 20 of us.
Yeah.
There's four that are president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer. All people that are invested in bringing something back to the community. So we put a purchase and sale into it, it was accepted. Hopefully, we'll get keys on Thursday, and then next week we'll have a board of directors meeting and then reach out to pretty much the community. We're trying to get a little bit from every sector, you know, the sports, the arts, the entertainment, comedy night, things like that.
Yeah.
And we've got it booked up for about a couple dozen shows already.
Great.
It seemed like there was a pent-up need, a pent-up demand for it, but it just wasn't run at all.
The way, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, so we spent, you know, July and August kind of reaching out, and I think we're in good shape.
Mm-hmm.
It's a nonprofit, none of us are going to make a dime off it, but it's to keep it going, and we hire an executive director and assistant executive director, so if all goes well. And as you know, it got some press a couple of weeks ago because it was a grant that was applied for, and thank you, and Jay Barrows and different people that saw it more as a community center, bathrooms, something that the town common needs. So hopefully, if everyone plays nice, it'll be a nice addition for the next 20, 30 years.
Yeah. It's an important piece of a downtown, I think, is having a facility like that. So it's great to see, I'm really glad it's taken shape, so, good news. Just one last, sort of rather, it's kind of an unfortunate piece of information that we had a social media issue that happened over the past week involving some events that occurred in town, allegedly involving some inappropriate pictures being taken and involving kids that were walking along the street. Turned out that the pictures actually weren't being taken, but yet the story just hit the social media waves rather quickly, and there's a lot of accusations being made, which was really unfortunate. Police department came involved, got involved immediately, and then did a media investigation and found out that there really wasn't much to it. Person who was accused of that was clearly not doing anything of the sort. So I just, it's sort of a thing that we, I just, it's sort of a precautionary note to folks, is be careful about using social media in a way that can be really damaging to people. If you're not sure of the facts, make sure you put something in writing like that, because this created a bit of a furor amongst folks, and it was really unfortunate, but, and it turned out to be not much of anything. Listen, we all, we're all, everybody here is very protective of our kids and the community as a whole, but let's make sure before we start putting stuff out that we make sure of the facts before that happens, because it was unfortunate how it all rolled out. So, you know, the chief, Baker, had briefed me on this last week and was concerned about how quickly it took on a life for someone, which was really unfortunate. So that's it, that's all for my.
I just had a couple of questions. What's the timetable for the roundabout near the Forbes Crossing?
The Forbes Crossing, we think it's, we're hoping it gets done this current calendar year. We ran into a little bit of an issue with the district office in terms of what their requirements were, but the state EOCD is working with us to try and mitigate those concerns. They were looking to try and do a full-depth reconstruction as opposed to a, you know, just a, you know, an overlay, which, you know, for a 55-year-old compacted road, that's, you don't want to dig that up, that's actually a good base road. So that's what we're trying to, we're trying to overcome now. We think we'll be able to do it, but just, it's a local consideration. There's a whole new office in place, the district office, and some of the requirements coming out there have been concerning at best in some ways. So we're trying to address that in a proactive way, and we think we have a pretty good handle on it, so.
Also, there's one more question. I saw in the paper that the MS4 regulations are probably not going to be put in place for at least a year, maybe even never? Have you heard?
They've been delayed again.
Been delayed for a year, and then.
I'm not surprised, given that the way the EPA is being addressed right now at the federal level, there is a bit of a turn back of the dial in terms of what the requirements are at the EPA level. So the fact that that's being pushed back is not a surprise to me.
Yeah, I mean, it's also unfunded.
Right, exactly.
It's a big financial burden on all the communities for that, so. But you haven't heard an official, I mean, I just saw it in the paper.
I've not, yeah. I mean, and we've not been notified.
Yeah, MassMinister's, well, this has been issuing some information, but there's nothing, you know, complete yet.
Yeah. So. And then a little concerning news about the, on the federal level today about North Korea and the US. That was a little bit scary to hear that conversation going on today between the president and North Korea about the threats going back and forth. That's a little unnerving to hear that, but hopefully that is just more of, more saber rattling more than it is anything. All right, that's all I have.
Mary Beth?
Yep, mine's pretty brief. Today, myself and eight chiefs interviewed for the next phase of the CEMRAC, our Regional Dispatch Executive Director position. Although the grant funding has sort of been delayed a bit, where all indications are that we're still a priority one and our funding looks good, so we're proceeding with caution in the interviews. We got it down from 40 people to seven, to we're at four now. And it went very, very well. I really appreciate, you know, I said it today, and I think we are exemplifying like the way four towns came together on all different levels, and I think that this is, you know, definitely noteworthy that our regional entity will be one that people write white papers about. I think it's working out really well. So that, I'll keep you updated on that.
What's the, is there a plan B if the grant doesn't go through?
We are scheduling a meeting with the town managers because some ideas popped out today about, or strategies in case that happens, but we were fortunate to have subject matter experts sitting with us today, who actually happens to be on the board that oversees the grants, and indications are pretty good for us. Not going to jinx it.
I would say that if you saw any of the applications, we actually checked off every box, whereas a lot of people weren't able to do that.
And there are communities that have already been notified that they're no longer in the running, so, so far, so good.
My fingers crossed.
Yeah. We've started, we've clicked into some of our collective bargaining. We have ongoing talks going on with the steelworkers. We met today for some impact bargaining with dispatchers. We're continuing to plug along with fire department, and we're initiating some negotiations with police. So steelworkers and fire are kind of retroactively negotiating stuff for FY17. Dispatch is ongoing because of the CEMRAC issue, and we're starting police being proactive. This doesn't end until June 30th of next year, so we're getting going.
Trying to stay ahead of the curve.
Yeah, staying ahead of the curve on collective bargaining. Our open enrollment begins in two weeks, and that's for the new stuff that we negotiated with the PEC, our new Blue Cross plans, including a very mitred-down select option that employees can have. So they have a couple of opportunities to learn about these. We're doing a little wellness sort of kickoff, where we'll have a representative from Blue Cross come in and talk to employees, as well as our regular health fair, which takes place in September.
One of the health insurance options, by the way, is one where the rate actually goes down this year. Extraordinary. I mean, I haven't seen a rate go down, I think, ever. So this is a first, this is a first.
It's a typical HMO plan, it's just a more limited network. If you can agree to the limited network, you can take advantage of it. So, yeah, so we have some good options. I mean, when the employee saves, the town saves as well, so people picking that option, it's long-term, it helps us.
It's a good option. It's not a watered-down option, it's a good option.
We, just to, we'll keep you updated, but we reached out to the moderator to talk about a fall town meeting date, and so things are in the works to talk about that, so hopefully I'll have a date for you coming up soon. You need to appoint the ag comm members, finalize that, and then we'll get back to you with the date for opening the warrant. And then finally, on Thursday, I look forward to, I'm doing an orientation with our senior greeters, our concierge people. So I interviewed, we interviewed five people, we have a sub as well, and putting together a schedule, and they'll be greeting folks as they come into town hall on a scheduled basis. We're putting together, you know, information for them, maps and what the departments do so they can answer questions. But I'll be doing a little meeting with them on Thursday, kick it off, so, that's all we get.
So just a fun item here. This is called, "Can you pick out your selectmen?" All right. Found this in our archives just this past week. I know, we need a picture of this. If anybody could just get a picture of this on TV, if they can show this. And then the second picture of this fine-looking guy right here, does anybody know who this is?
You have the impact.
Yeah.
I can't even see it.
Mr. Elfin.
I'm going to.
Should we pass it down?
Is this you?
This is Doc Elfin in his youth, and he was a pretty rugged guy. He was a pretty rugged guy. He looked like he was going to play for the Patriots, actually.
December 1993 is this one.
Wow, where'd you dig those up?
Yeah. Actually, Randy found them in his files.
You were handsome, what happened?
Wow.
This one is "Making a Difference." It's an article about you.
Impressive.
Y'all were young boys. And Peak Stuff Lobster was 1095.
Back then.
All right, anybody have any questions here, or anything? There, the floor is yours.
I don't really have anything, although I will be calling you about the grant tomorrow.
Okay.
But in the meantime, the only thing I'll have to say is I think Doc already looks rugged as it is.
Just a little grayer is all, right?
Exactly, that even adds to the ruggedness.
Here you go.
I'm good.
All right. Thank you. Make a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Yes.
Those in favor?
Hi.